Yes, sir. How are you doing?
I'm good. Could you say Lamar Connor?
Yeah, sure.
Good to see you.
How are you?
Lamar.
I've met you before.
Yeah, we have. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
If traffic had been just a little bit slower coming this way.
Now, where did you come from?
Well, near Mar Beach. It took me...
It's crazy.
I came out here Holiday Road near Mar Beach, turned toward Sand Dustin, took me twenty minutes to go two miles. I've never s- I've lived here twenty-five years and I've never seen any traffic like this on a non-holiday.
I had a friend of mine that lived in Sand Dustin, this probably three years ago or four. He had family coming in from Texas and he wanted to take them down to the harbor for dinner. Left his house there in Sand Dustin and he said, "Two hours later, I was finally able to turn around, come back and give up because I wasn't even halfway there."
Well, I don't know why people keep coming back.
Well, I can't imagine it isn't going to have an impact.
Well, it is. And I work with several banks. A lot of those people have realized that the hottest listed market and fastest growing area now is Arden Beach. For D O and Orange Beach, people just give up, no one matters.
Well, I think you're going to see it going the other way east too, to like Appalachia.
Mexico East, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just longer to get there for most people who are driving.
We have to elect a new vice chair?
I'm sorry?
I think we have to select a new vice chair.
We do? Not on the agenda.
I believe, uh, Scott, uh, took a job for the county.
He did.
As the county surveyor.
Yeah, he was.
And he was our vice chair. So...
Sorry, you're the one.
I was going to vote for you. I'm serious. You've been here forever.
No, I probably...
You've been here longer than I have.
I think this is my third year.
Yeah, I've been here like, I ain't sure one.
You're right at one, I think.
Probably close to one.
Yeah.
Give or take a little bit.
I hate losing Scott.
And I'm, aside from you and Joe, I'd be the next oldest person here.
I know, and I really hate losing Scott and Tony.
Yeah, Scott and Tony like boom-boom.
Yeah, they were...
To be our third vice chair and lucky, a little over a year. There you are. You coming back? We need you.
Were you here this morning?
We were just missing you.
You know Scott resigned too, Tony.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He took a job with the county.
Yeah, surveyor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't they work there, huh?
No, um, I don't know why. There's a good reason, I'm sure.
He had a meeting in Tallahassee.
Sure, or something like that.
Well, it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. You doing okay? Any chance you can come back to me?
I don't know. We'll see. It'll be a while. I'm kind of glad to have a break.
Yeah, I know. You and Scott with your background are just very, very valuable to us.
Jeff is joining y'all. He's here.
Who's?
Jeff is a... So, he'll... We'll catch up later. Y'all need to change the ordinance for this board.
Change the what?
The ordinance that establishes this board.
Give us what?
Exonerating that ordinance. Like the... The ARB board should get a more, uh, mining board of protections in place.
Well, we don't... Well, how'd your situation turn out? Okay?
I don't know. I guess by following those boards, everyone feels it. And we'll catch up.
Is Joe familiar with that or aware of?
Somewhat, yeah. He does watch this. He's a favorite couple. Sure, he's a maniac, actually. I hear him. He's set up on just...
He's coming off, huh?
He's been off.
It's interesting. Jeff Chick.
Hey, Jeff.
How you doing, man?
Doing okay. How are you?
Good.
So, we're missing... We're missing two, aren't we?
You replaced, uh...
Tony, I thought.
Tony, okay. So whoever was replacing Scott probably hasn't been appointed yet.
Right.
And then, uh, Joe should be here. And Phillip Anderson is not coming. And I am here. And that's one, two, three, four, five... Six, seven. One's missing.
Four gets a quorum, right?
Four gets a quorum. Yeah, we'll have a quorum.
Okay.
For sure. But we're missing...
They usually let the applicant know that, you know, they don't want to go with us four.
Somebody that was...
Mr. Chick?
Sir.
Lamar Connor.
Hey, how are you?
I'm fine. So, you... I know a couple of chicks and there can't be too many here, right? But, um, I know Angela.
I've met her on Facebook, but we are not related.
And then there's another lady that worked for Sand Dustin.
Sean, that's my wife.
Sean?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well...
She was at the Sand Dustin charity.
I was one of the founders of that.
Yeah.
And she was as well. She was on her, their second board, second year. And so, she was very wonderful.
Oh, yeah. She's with the Seaside, uh, school now. I'm in Mar County.
That's just Carrying Wine Foundation. My God, what that's turned into, you know?
That's a beast. No, and you know, we're just a group of sick-ass guys started. And we just thought it'd be fun because July is today, we'll raise some money. First charity was many couples. First year, we only had, we took it up, we only had about three months to get it ready to go. And we risked a lady's house and all. That was pretty much money.
Yeah.
And so, we kept on and we kept on. And then, you know, after about the thirty, it was bigger than we were.
Are we still on it?
Yeah.
Well, you know, start twelve to year, we risked about twenty-eight million. I'm on the board with them, Coach Jones, they were concerned. They gave us three hundred thousand. I should have got some. We grew.
Hi, Jeff Chick.
Jeff?
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Got a turkey call?
Yes.
Sorry, you ten.
I was going to get that.
Good to see you. I saw the question. Carpenter, how you doing?
How are y'all tonight?
Nope. Is this all we have coming?
Yes, we did.
Is this all?
It's just these.
You move over.
Good to see you.
Phil, move over.
I've got one bit over.
Phil's not coming.
Right, right.
Move over. Go be on the side of Jim.
Anyway. Yeah, well, I know where you are. I don't know if that's going to come up tonight.
Well... The reason is... Selection of all...
Yeah. Unrelated to this.
I know. I do it too. I know.
Surprise, surprise, huh? Quagmire.
Anyway, it's good to meet you.
It's showtime, isn't it? Shouldn't we wait till we get up? Shouldn't we? I mean, your call, I guess.
It's a lot. We want to nick your out. We already...
Charles already attacked me. You see Jeff doesn't know me. He doesn't know the other folks.
He won't do it.
You guys can learn.
We don't really have any.
It's good that she had Dave there.
Yeah, well, they can do that for me. That's what they do for Scott. Isn't it, Charles?
Yeah, that's what we did.
How you say your name?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Or Giaf. I had a buddy up in Marietta. His name, he spelled Jeff that way.
Yeah.
Always called him Giaf. And he almost smacked me.
You live in the Marpitt?
I do. We have a farm up in Marietta.
Where's that, Jeff?
We're on T R Miller Road.
Oh, okay.
Which is up one eighty-five.
Yeah.
About eighty-three.
Exactly where T R Miller Road is.
What kind of farming? What kind of farming?
Horses and hay.
Oh, yeah?
Yep. Where at on T R Miller Road?
I'm all the way down the back.
All the way past Seraphine and them?
Well, the immediate next-door neighbor.
On the left or the right?
The big white metal building on the, uh, on the right.
On the right, okay.
He's got some land I was going to say to you.
Yeah, I do in fact.
Lamar.
This guy, Lamar, where are we?
Connerly.
Connerly.
I fell in there forever.
Where's Mr. Haber?
I don't know. He just told me that, uh, about two weeks ago that he had a conflict and he had to be out of town doing stuff.
Who's going to do the prayers?
I'm not very good at it.
Yeah, you can say prayer.
On my first try?
Yeah.
Phil, you want to do?
It's called baptism.
Phil, you want to do?
I'm fine.
Do you want to do?
I can do it.
At this time, we would call the July twenty-seventh Walton County Zoning Board Adjustment Meeting to order. If you would please stand as we have the invocation followed by the place of leisure. Jeff, get the word to the invocation for us, please.
Dear Lord, please bless this meeting and help us all make wise choices and do the right thing. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's been March since I've been here, so it's going to take a little while, I guess, to getting used to everything. But I do appreciate all the board members here tonight. We do have a new board member that has taken the place of Tony Valley. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's whose position you have taken is, uh, Mr. Jeff Chick. And we appreciate you serving.
I had to be here.
I'm sure that you will have any questions, just let us know. Have you ever served on the board before?
Not on this board.
Well, good deal. Are there any announcements that need to be made?
Well, uh, as we've announced once before, the last meeting, the four members here, I know we have an issue or two on the agenda. With four members here, we'll have to have four affirmative votes to take any action.
We only have one item before us, don't we?
I think that's all I see on the agenda. And obviously, uh, there's always the option for the proponent to withdraw that issue if they want a full board or proceed on. We'd like to proceed. Sure.
You don't have anything going on with any of our appeals?
I do. We just got one set, uh, today for September the sixth, and that's the Sunset Beach, uh, issue.
Which one is that?
It's, uh, Sunset Beach HOA versus Z B A and Elise HOA.
Which one? Which, uh, what's that about? Do you remember?
It was a blanket variance, L C subdivision and the, uh, the blanket variance for, uh, so that they felt according to their original covenants or...
If I recall, I think it was, this was on the agenda when I was here the last time. I recall it as a setback issue, and I forgot whether it was a front or the side, but, um, I know there was some...
Just the subdivision.
Yeah, it was a whole subdivision and then the neighbors had an issue with that. But anyway, that was sent up on appeal and that will be heard on September sixth.
I guess I did not know that one was on appeal. Our secretary, what's your name again?
I'm Debbie.
You're Debbie? Are we doing good for you? If you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm good.
Stop us and let us know. Anyone here tonight that is planning to speak before this board, if you would, please stand, raise your right hand so you'll be sworn in that the testimony you give be the truth. Mr. Connerly?
Do you want me to swear? You solemnly swear or affirm that you, the testimony that you give tonight will be the truth and only the truth and the entire truth, so if you got it.
We have one item on the agenda. I believe that Provo variance, if you would please come to the podium. Say your name for the record.
Scott Matthew Provo.
Say that again.
Scott Matthew Provo. This is for the parking variance.
Yes, sir. Tell us why we should approve your variance.
I'm here applying for a variance, uh, to comply with section nine of the Endangered Species Act, which I was notified of by the Planning Department. Uh, January seventh, they received a letter from the U.S. Department of the Interior, Fish and Wildlife, that, um, I had homesteaded and had a house there, and I tore it down to rebuild. And I was then, um, not denied the right to build, rebuild, but I was denied the right to start building. Um, at the time, uh, Planning Building Department didn't have anything in place to, um, address people who were adjacent to the state parks or near there. And Fish and Wildlife came in and said, um, Walton County needs to cease issuing building permits because they're not in compliance. My permit was out of planning, going to the Building Department on January seventh, when they received a letter from the U.S. Department of Interior. It said, "The service has offered to assist Walton County in better understanding of requirements of the Endangered Species Act, but thus far, no assistance has been requested. Walton County's current planning of permitting of construction activities is of concern, particularly since we've tried to reach out to better inform the county of their obligations under federal law. Per our own federal requirements, we have now contacted our law enforcement office regarding this situation. Please indicate how you intend to remedy these issues and the future of your coastal permitting program to address Choctaw Hachy beach mouse impacts."
Is that in our packet? Did you provide that?
The, the letter is not.
The letter's not in the packet?
It, it, this is a, this was given to me by Planning. Uh, Jason and Planning gave me that letter.
That's from the Department of Interior?
To Mr. Wayne Dias.
And we don't have any, it's not in our packet?
It's not in our packet.
It was not a, a, it was not in the application part. This is just part of my, I was told I would give, uh, proof.
That's the letter from the Department of Interior that says for you to cease, insist your building.
No, this was a letter to the Walton County Planning Department to cease permitting.
I think we need to copy that in our packet.
I agree. We definitely need it as part of your application.
Walton County had...
Could you give it to us, to Vivian? Would you go make us some copies, please? And if you want to wait till we get that done, because I'd like to see that.
Okay. Can I give a little history of...
Sure.
The hardship that was created? In nineteen seventy, there was a group called the Friends of Grayton Beach that formed to try to get the area around Grayton Beach purchased by the state. In nineteen eighty-five, that in fact happened. The state had a, a very large land purchase, hundreds of thousands of acres, part of which included what was at the time, in nineteen eighty-five, called Grayton Dunes State Park. I was in the military at the time, and I happened to take military leave because my mother-in-law headed up that group called the Friends of Grayton Beach. I stood out in the dunes of Grayton Beach in nineteen eighty-five when it was dedicated by, at the time, Governor Graham. Earl Hutto, who was a congressman for the district, was there, never knowing that eight years later, I'd be given the opportunity to buy a piece of property on the very dunes that my mother-in-law had helped, had worked for for thirteen years. I serve on the board of the Grayton Beach Neighborhood Association. We've been homes, we have homesteaded this property. Uh, there's a long legacy in my wife's family of the area in Grayton Beach. So in twenty fifteen, um, Grayton Beach, as you know, has the Red Bar, Chorinca's Zoo Gallery. It's very congested. There is a limited amount of parking. So, um, the Grayton Beach Neighborhood Association formed a committee to try to see if we could in fact get enough support for an overlay neighborhood plan for Grayton Beach. We were successful in doing that in two, twenty fifteen, in part, and I'm a very strong proponent of the neighborhood plan. I was part of that group. In that neighborhood plan, we put an overlay parking requirement that you won't find anywhere else in Walton County. Walton County's parking requirements, and that's why I'm here for the variance, Walton County's parking variance by the code is if you apply for a three-bedroom house, you only need, need two parking spaces. If you increase your bedrooms, you need one parking spot per bedroom. So my house, if it were in Walton County outside Grayton Beach, I have a seven-bedroom house, it would only need six parking spots. Two for the first three bedrooms, and I have four more bedrooms, so four plus two is six. Under our, the reason we put this parking overlay in Grayton Beach, we're pretty protective of Grayton Beach, and people park all over the right-of-way, all over our lawns. So we said, "Look, there's so much fraud being committed. People are buying in. They got lots. They're permitting a three-bedroom house with two parking spots. And then after the fact, finishing off the three dens that had a bathroom attached to them. And we ended up with a six-bedroom house, five baths, with two parking spots." So to bring us all together, we said, "Let's, in our neighborhood plan, put a separate parking ordinance part of it, and said, 'Let's do it by square footage.'" So our square footage is pretty onerous. If you're going to build a big rental house, you're going to have to have the parking for it. And it's in, that, that is in your packet, but it's fifteen hundred square feet. You need two spots. Every five hundred square feet above fifteen hundred, up to forty-five hundred, you need one additional parking spot. Every five hundred feet above forty-five hundred, if you're going to build a monster rental house, you need two more parking spots per five hundred feet. I'm in the neighborhood, I, I, I'm under the neighborhood plan, and that's why I'm here, because I have a six thousand square foot, seven-bedroom house that I'm homesteading. I don't plan on living, uh, leaving. I have a handicap ramp and an elevator. I'll be carried out feet first. But I have to have fourteen parking spots. So when Fish and Wildlife walked my lot and looked at my site plan that required fourteen parking spots, it was in direct conflict with the Endangered Species Act that they're trying to enforce federally. I'm having to hire a landscape architect and make sure all the indigenous planting around my lot complies with their law. And I can't park bicycles, can't have Yola boards, can't have boogie boards anywhere around my lot. It's, I'm having to, the, the specific hardship is I have to have a comprehensive enhancement plan filed with the county of what I'm going to do around my lot because it's, it's part of the building process. I'm not being denied the opportunity to build or rebuild. I just have to comply with other rules that other people don't have to comply with. So, um, I have the room for the fourteen parking spots, but they would rather it be landscaped with indigenous plants, sea oats, that the Choctaw Hachy beach mouse feeds on. And, um, so that's kind of the history of the overlay of why I'm here in the first place.
Whenever you say that they'd rather have it planted, you know, for the beach sites, you saying they don't want you to use those fourteen spots?
No, I didn't say that. They, they asked us, "Do we want fourteen parking spots?" And I said, "No." I said, "It's just me and my wife. We have three children. One lives on Eastern Lake and two live in Washington, D.C." Uh, I said, "I think seven would be more than enough," which is one more than what I would be required if I was anywhere else in the county. And she said, "Good, because I want you to landscape all these ones, and I'm going to help you."
Now, you're talking about the Planning Department? Are you talking about Walton County? Are you talking, who are you talking about that's approving you to go from fourteen to seven?
I was asked by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife to reduce my parking.
Okay.
Because it was in direct conflict with section nine of the Endangered Species Act.
Okay.
And she said, "Would you please not put fourteen spots in?" Because that's in direct conflict with the law that I'm federally advising you of to comply with to get your building permit.
Scott, uh, my name is Jeff. I, I'm an architect. I, I know you're an architect very well, and I have some empathy for what you're going through because I also do quite a bit of Gulffront construction, and I've, I've run into this problem on a number of our projects. So I, I know what you're struggling with. I noticed, uh, in the photos in our packet that the lot had been cleared from pin to pin so that there was no indigenous vegetation left on the site before you started going vertical with the structure. And I heard that you were, uh, held up with your building permit until Fish and Wildlife approved the project to move forward. And I'm just curious, what did they make you, uh, sign and able, for, to enable you to move forward? Did you hire Wetland Sciences to do a, an enhancement plan?
No, and, uh, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is with us tonight and will follow me. What was required was Walton County to understand how to comply with the law. And that's what held me up because they had, so how we got over this, what did I do? I was stuck. The county had never been to any workshops. They had never answered anything the federal government advised them to do. And I understand it from the county perspective also. That requires increased staffing. It requires money. It requires ordinances that they don't have. And they didn't know how to go forward. This was the first time it had ever happened. And so what happened is I got the county attorney, I got the head of planning, Wayne Dias, I got every single planner, I got the turtle-like shorebird lady, Melinda Gates, I hired an attorney, I got a landscape architect, I got my architect, as you know, Tom Chris. I got every stakeholder I could and the property owners around me, and we went on-site and tried to figure out how do we move forward because I tore my house down and was held up in planning by this letter. I had moved out to start construction. And I, I was stuck, and the county didn't know what to do. So I had to start the process of just, let's just communicate and see how we can get over it because it is harming me. It is a hardship. I was out of that for four months before Fish and Wildlife and the county finally resolved to, okay, it hit all the papers here in January when it stopped. And what happened was Fish and Wildlife then got with the county, drew up new beach mouses, mouse maps. They, they got an affidavit that every single, when you go to apply for a building permit now, you have to sign an affidavit that if you're in beach mouse tier one, you'll contact the Fish and Wildlife, or you take your chances, and you get it notarized. So you, the onus is on you now.
Mm-hmm.
Because Fish and Wildlife can't oversee every permit. The county can't, the problem is, there's just not enough staffing. And so I liked the way Fish and Wildlife has at least engaged. They came to the Grayton Beach Neighborhood Association at our annual meeting and sat there and got up and said, "Look, we're not here to create another layer of government. We're trying to educate you that there are issues here that nobody even knows about. And the easier way to do it i- is build a consensus and get buy-in, then halt everything."
What did they, what did they say and to, that enabled you to move forward?
She said, "I will tell the county to issue you a building permit, but I'm going to staple on an addendum to your building permit that says you have to comply with all the federal government regulations that I tell you you have to before you get a CO." So that's what I'm under right now. I'm building with an amendment to my building plan, and it's not onerous. It is that I will re-vegetate, which I would anyway, in accordance with their wishes. And that's really, because my lot was a little bit different. If it was a vacant lot, it would be different because then you're taking the beach mouse habitat, which happened in this letter. If you had the letter, you can see the three instances that set this on fire with Fish and Wildlife. I had a house there. I had lived there for twenty-two years and homesteaded. The impact... The impact, the increased impact I had was almost negligible, square footage, but I was rebuilding, and if it had been a vacant lot, it would have been a whole different thing, because then I would be taking habitat away. As it was, I cleared the lot to rebuild, and I will re-vegetate.
So you're going to-
To their standard.
What I'd like to do here is get on to the issue before us, an issue before us is the variance request, so what is your variance request?
My variance request is to go from 14 to seven, as was requested by the Department of Interior to reduce my parking, to comply with the Section 9.
And you have the plan, and et cetera, and all that's ready?
They're in your packet, there's the, the site plan has the 14 that I had noted, and then I have it down to the seven that are there.
Okay. Listen to, anyone else like to speak, we give you the opportunity to come back before the board, before we close the discussion, okay? Has anyone else here like to speak on this? Say your name for the record, and you, and you sworn in, is that correct?
Yes, my name is Kristy Yancis, I'm with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, I'm the beach mouse recovery biologist.
Kristy, what's your last name?
Kristy Yancis, Y-A-N-C-H-I-S, Kristy with a K and I.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So, yes, Mr. Provost's house was one of the few that did get caught up in the, the middle of the, the speech mouse issue with, with Walton County, and he's been working with us great from the beginning, but as he said, you know, we didn't want to stop his construction, and I still haven't even completed all his review on his, his project, but he has actually submitted us a conservation enhancement plan, which I need to, in turn, give him a letter, and it outlines how he has avoided, minimized, and mitigated for his impacts to beach mouse habitat. So once I review that and give it back to him, he will have a document that he then can take to Walton County to get his CO and have that recorded with the county. But before that, he's been, we've been working together, he asks me whenever he has any questions or things, I was there, I helped him stake out his lot, but we did come on after the house had been torn down and it had been cleared, so there, there was no, no way to stop that from happening, because it, it just, the timing of it fell through, he didn't know, it wasn't his fault, but he's been more than willing to do what he can to make it right.
You didn't agree with his variance request, you supported?
Yes, 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 when he told me it was 14 spaces needed, you know, and here I was asking him to restore, he was saying, "Plant with native plants," but we call it restoration, so restoring back his lot that he has not impacted.
So we're good, you're good.
Right, yes.
Do you have any questions for him?
Well, so I'm assuming that that would, you'd be replanting with native vegetation around the three sides of the building where all the parking was scheduled to go?
Right, everything that's remaining on his lot, other than his house and his driveway, and there's an extra parking spot there.
Anyone else having a question?
And then probably, you know, signing it to do so, so everyone is aware, he doesn't have people parking on it and stuff, also.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
How about South, Vivian?
It's good evening.
Actually, what they're asking for is a variance to the-
To the, the-
Department-
Parking requirements in Chapter 5 of, the, the Greaton Beach has a separate, had a separate ordinance that's embedded into Chapter 5 of the Land Development Code, and they have different parking requirements than the rest of the county.
The county recognized that in the Greaton Beach?
Yes, it is in page, let's see.
That's fine.
Yeah, and it's, it's different, it's, it's based on square footage instead of bedrooms, and so that's where they got to the 14 spaces that they would need, but then, I guess, when the, the beach mouse came up, then they were, they, they had the ability to put the 14 parking spaces in, but had to reduce it because of the impacts of the beach mouse. It does meet the standard Walton County parking chart, which would require seven parking spaces, so that is where they are.
Do you have no problem with it?
Well, no, I think-
We need to save the beach mice.
Well-
Fine, Kat.
Definitely, definitely. Their location, they are right there at the, by the dunes and everything, I just think that they, you know, needed to prove their hardship and, and explain it to you them, themselves as to why, why it was a hardship.
I think he definitely has the hardship, I sure do. Any questions for Vivian? Charlie?
Yeah, I, I didn't care for the design of the seven spaces that they provided, I, I think it still encroaches on the beach mouse habitat, and I think that there's a better way to design the 20-foot adjacent to the street, where I guess it's Lupine Road, that you could, you could have more parking with less impact if you, if you redesign that, so.
Are you talking to Vivian, or are you talking to-
Would you like them to come back up?
Well, I, I was just going to suggest to Scott that it looks like there's the-
Wait, 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 wait a minute. We, we, we're going to listen to Vivian, and we're going to give Mr. Provost a chance to come back, and then you can talk to him, but we got to finish up with Vivian.
Okay.
Any, is anything for Vivian?
I would just ask, what is staff's recommendation?
Well, basically, that I think, you know, sometimes you need to make adjustments to things embedded in the Land Development Code, and proven hardship is a basis for recommendation, based on the evidence that they provide, so.
Well, I'm just, I'm partial to supporting the staff's recommendation, generally speaking, so that's the reason I asked that, thank you.
I usually vote against them.
I would say, their, oh, their, their house was already, the planning was already done, they'd already demolished their house when this came up, so that's all, that's what I can provide to it. And also, it is a variance from the, the Greaton Beach parking standards, and also the Greaton Beach Neighborhood Plan, which references those standards, so.
Thank you very much. Come, Mr. Provost, come back before the board, do you have anything to say, anything to add?
I think I've tried to comply with the federal government's request, which it's, I'm a homeowner, I'm trying to do whatever I can to build my house.
I think you're doing good.
It's a, I think one of the major points is, this is a homesteaded property with me and my wife, this is not a rental, it has never been for 22 years, nor will it be.
You're doing good, anything else you want to add, I mean?
No, sir, I'll, I'll listen to-
I, I feel that the, the house is pretty far away from the congestion of the restaurant area, and, and that that was the origin of needing the additional parking, where these big monster rental houses were-
Correct.
Spilling out into the street and causing the problems, I don't see this house ever having those problems. The seven parking space plan that was submitted appears that there's just a better way that you could design that to minimize the impact to the beach mouse, and, and not have the, the cars double-stacked on either side, and make better use of the curb cut.
The reason that, that is like that, if you look at the two on the south side, I'm one of the 15 licensed charter captains here in Walton County-
Mm-hmm, it's for a boat.
I have a boat.
Yep.
And so I, I don't want my boat sitting on the street, and so that's why the two are on the south side, I totally agree, I would rather not have those, but I can't leave my boat sit on the street.
Sure.
So, those two parking spots where I back up my boat and my truck are critical, the other one at the, at Lupine is, the two there is simply going to be a circular in and out, and the one in front of my garage will probably never be used, but I have room shown there that there's easy seven.
Sure.
Easily have more too, but I'm trying to minimize the parking, for the very reason I'm applying for the variance, so I can vegetate. And the other thing is, the parking between the house, we're working on it, we're going to try to use that, it's a honeycomb that you stretch out, you fill with gravel, and you pack over, and it's hard-packed, so you can vegetate over it and still, it, it's not like it's cement, or it's not pavers, we're trying to minimize the impact on the hardscape.
Okay. Very good, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Close the public discussion?
Motion to close.
Second.
All the way around?
I have it.
We all voted, close it, sorry about that.
I'm okay.
We were slow down.
I got it.
I was told to slow down. Okay, motion?
Motion to approve.
Bill Fletcher made a motion to approve?
Second.
Charlie's made a second motion. We'll start this discussion, Jeff?
I think that this is not an issue, issue of the lot not having the potential for 14 spaces, it certainly does, in that I would move to approve the variance based on the special circumstances.
Bill Fletcher?
I just commend Mr. Provost for, for how he's handled this, I'm very much in favor.
I agree, Charlie?
Same.
We have a motion to approve, second, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
No, I, I said, I was, I basically agree, I mean, I think he was kind of undecided when the little church mouse thing came up, he'd already tore his house down. What did I say?
Little cruder.
You all get it right.
At any rate, whichever kind of mouse, I, I think he's definitely got a hardship, he seems like he's trying to do the right thing, I think seven spots probably be enough for him anyway.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, Charlie, how you vote?
Vote, approve, aye.
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 You're good?
Got it.
Your, variance request has been approved, the attorney should have it to me within 90 days, and I sign it, and you can continue, how about that?
Thank you very much.
I was joking, 15 days we should have it.
He has a sick sense of humor.
Any part of the business, anything else we want to discuss? Minutes?
Yep. I wouldn't, you and I were not at that meeting.
We voted on it.
I wasn't at that meeting either.
No.
Nor was I.
Well, I was here. You certainly can, there's no need to have to do them tonight.
There's no need to do it.
You can certainly do it for next week.
Well, do I need a motion to continue the minutes of the next meeting?
I'll make that motion to extend.
It can be an announcement, or you can make a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
I think as chairman, you can just-
He can just announce it, like, for him here who attended the last meeting, and there's, approval of the minutes will wait till the next meeting.
Approval of the minutes will wait till the next meeting, okay. No other, you, you want to discuss anything before we leave?
I'm good.
You're good? Everybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All the way around?
Aye.
Oh boy, this is better than last one I was asking. Four and a half hours.
You might come back, or, or before midnight.
It's too late now, aren't we supposed to like, put that into the record?
Letter, but it's a moot point now, I guess, but.